...
The prophet says, "The prophet knows." That's why I love to preach. Because the prophet can. They do protect our world. The prophet did come every day, every week. What to preach? The prophet said, "The Lord has been here." Because the prophet can. He will pray to God. He said, "The prophet can." He said, "The prophet can." Just in the merit of the scrolls of Moses. They will do it, Moses, every Sabbath. They will do it, Moses, every Sabbath. They say, "Moses, say it." "Moses, say it." "The prophet said it." The Lord has been here. The prophet says, "The prophet can." All in that stage, my own experience. She may not know where. He was Elohim. And I Elohim. That is when he thought about you. The prophet has forgotten this. That is when he wrote your name in the Lamb's book of life. Your brother is there, I'm aware. It's when his root and left. In his might, he took them back. Your name. The name of the book of life. He was Elohim. He was Elohim. The prophet says, "God is Jesus Christ." He is the Christ who has come. To lift you and heal your pains. To give you and heal your pains. But God is Elohim. He gave you and healed your pains. When Jesus came, he came to pay the price. For you to go back, play in heaven. You too, man. The thought of salvation. You are not saved. All the cross. You are not saved. You are not saved. You are not saved. You are not saved by God. So Jesus came. Jesus came. He saw you all back home. Your name was there. He died for you. He died for you. Died for the people. His name was in the book of life. He didn't come to die. He is pathetic death. He was a devil. For you, for you to be sympathetic. He didn't die. A curse of pain. For you to be sympathetic. He didn't die. The type of death. To cause people to come. He died for those people. Now they are paid to come. That's why he is here today. He has got the power. So the price of your death. I am to redeem. You buy back. What you pay already. This is the brick bang. For the heart of the dead. This is the brick bang. For the people. You pay. For the salvation of the dead. Where were you? The son of God. The child of God. Where were you? Seven spirits. He was already talking about redemption. I don't understand. Of the seven churches. She must say. He was already talking about redemption. I don't understand. Of the seven churches. She must say. How is that all Tesla men? That's all Tesla men. Came to slay a lamb. Why you all? Why you slay a bullock? Why you take his blood? What are you? And smite it at the door. Take a nap. Seven times. Which made the worshipers. Were redeemed. By the blood. For seven churches. Which is why, in the temple. In the first sanctuary. There was a candlestick. Of seven candles. In the temple. In the seven churches. Because the seven colors of God. Were affecting the process of redemption. The prophet was coming to place. This time. The Lord has been here. The Lord has been here. Came to the Lamb. The throne. John was a water drinker. The Lamb had seven holes. The seven churches. With the seven candles. He had seven eyes. He had seven messages. He had seven stories. He had a voiding. Set to the seven churches. We are under the spirit of God. We are under the power of God. We are under the power of redemption. From the churches. We are in the power of redemption. We are fulfilling what Elohim was. Before we met. We have the plan. In manifestation. We are in the manifestation. Of the plan of God. Which is the beginning. He said, "For I want to begin." Seven spirits. We have seven colors. Elohim. For seven churches. In all Tesla men. Seven, seven, seven bullocks. There was seven churches. There was seven candles. And seven days. The shoebread. In the first sanctuary. We could be put on a Sabbath day. Like a slave. And we press on the Sabbath day. Seven days. The shoebread. We lost in perpetual fire. Oh, the perpetual present of God. Seven churches. Every church. Came to bring this one day. We love the day. And the seven colors of God. And so we must. And that's it. The Lord has been here. That's it. We are right where the bread of life is being broken. He is part of the Lord. He is the one who paid you. In the seven days. Of the bread of his presence. And she was. We have the shoebread. And she was paid you. The Lord has been here. That's it. They have seven, seven, seven days. The seven crosses. They have seven, 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 uh, seven, seven clusters of seven days. But they are. Who can eat? Who can eat? And the seven days. Into the same day as the Sabbath of this. We must do it. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Emaia. Tell his seven. To look for him. Do the second time. Then learn. Now I was told. For it did you say? Seven times. Hallelujah! God. Now you see, this is the end of the mission. Of redemption. So the will not be dead. In the power of redemption. In the. Emaia was a second day. I can do that. And it's just a lot. You know, the Lord will be there. And the seven steps. Before the kingdom stand up. God was the big thing. His army showed up. The seven churches. Before he began to take the big. The Lord was ready. And the seven was there. Hallelujah! And when the picture of the fire was taken. He was a little. Hallelujah! Six. Six. The Lord has. The seven days. The Lord has. The seven days. This meaning. To the six. And this is the seven churches. The Lord has been here. The Lord has been here. And he was there. And I Elohim. What was happening? In the ages to come. But the Lord says. This is how you hit it. I know it manifested. In this night. Because there are. My poor, poor friend. But now, I don't see you. But it's sad. It's a good one. It's a good one. It's a good one. You may take your seats. I don't need your pass. I would rather tell you to take your seats. Than asking you to stand. I don't want to sit. I'm sorry. I would rather tell you to sit. Than to ask you to stand. When the Bible says. When they were giving sense. The Bible to the scroll. From the top to the bottom. The Bible is the rhythm of the word. From the flesh of our hands. And with grace. And you say amen. The Lord has been here. The man is there. He is the Pope of the Church. The Lord has been here. The Lord has been here. Now it's Elohim. He's Elohim. In seven colors. The big thing. His plan of redemption. The big thing. His seven names of redemption. Jehovah. 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 All those seven news. Bottomed up. In Elohim. But he was not yet Jehovah. What Jehovah means. So my home dwells with his family. He was not female. So he was not Jehovah. But now, he was Jehovah. And he will never be ever again. He will never be. Okay, let me just go to the concert. Let's believe the name of God. If you want to know if we are, if we are full of the Holy Ghost. See if how you rejoice. Because then you're dead. Because then you're dead. Is what you are. Don't ruin it. You hear what I'm saying? This word I'm talking about. You. The purpose of the word. So the word. That I will show. It means the word in you. The word is must come. So find a little boy. Who had never been before a man. When he saw a little boy. Somewhere else. In front of him. Did this. The boy in front of him. Did this station also. When he held. In front of him. When he held. He was learning at that time. In front of him. Was learning at that time. At that time. The boy was perplexed. He thanked his mother. It's a mama. That's me. That's me. That's me. That's me. That is why. The word is my soul. Raise your hand. Mama! That's me. That's me. That's me. The boy, the corner land, he saw a boy. That was a short call. Hallelujah! Thank you, Jesus! Thank you, Lord! Now, in chapter four, we are great here. The one that was single of all. Hallelujah! To look upon him. He looked like he was just. To look upon him. He looked like he was a, 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 a something. You could not see where he was living. Because he had a Bible that is hard shot. Because he is simply from something, from, 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 from just something. But he doesn't speak about other stones in between. Because these stones here just by something. They presented the twelve best stones. All the twelve sons of Jacob. Who was from Ruben. To Benjamin. Each one of them. And Beth the stone. And Ruben the stone. Was just. And Benjamin the stone. Was something. When he looked upon him. He was with the fist. He was with the last. Alpha. He was the beginning. He was the end. He was in the beginning. Jesus Christ. The same. Today. Forever. From just. Something. And this goes here. She must buy. Only a cross. And I can't stop. But she's here. On Aaron's chest. And I can't do much. In high priest. Talking to the temple. By the temple. To worship. The twelve stones. Are the stones. Of three. I can't do that. Free, 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 free. That's short. The Lord has been here. Because those three names. One law. Hallelujah! Where are the names? Which are meant to be represented. By the way, we are going to come. On the journey. To carry them. To carry them. To carry them. Three were here. With their standards. This one with the standard. Two thousand and two. Other tribes. In the minor. In Rema. And the two. In the rocks. And the other two. And the it's. Those are the ones that are saying, "Don't believe it." Hallelujah! So that's how they went to move in the journey. They were supposed to be those roles. Who presented the children of Israel. And all children of Israel. They were supposed to agree. For any church. That God was giving to them. That's why the Bible says. It always say. Hey, man! So those stones there. Representing. Israel. So when you brought them, they were. You brought them to him. And the dream was saved. All those stones. Those stones were supposed to flicker. All of them to say, "Amen." They were supposed to take the position. Of the main point. They were supposed to flicker all of them. Flicker, 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 flicker. All say, "Amen." Take the same name. The Lord has been here. Hallelujah! So God. In his plan of redemption. Was thinking about all these things. Before the world began. And we are coming here. As an expression. Of these stones. So we are really a good club. In terms of where we stand. But if you are not worshiping God. In the seven churches. You are out of the plan of redemption. If you are not worshiping God. In the church of your day. The end of your day. You are outside of redemption. This is the plan. Of redemption. Now the prophet goes on to tell us. So this trifles here. Just by a certain stone. Representing Ruben. And Benjamin. The first and the last. Evan. Uh, it says that there was a rainbow. And then around the throne. In the side. It was like an emerald. The emerald is a stone again. So I'm like. Around the throne. In the side. It was like an emerald. The emerald is a stone. Green, amber color. Yellowish green. Which makes it amber. That yellow is green. This is the thing. God. What is the purpose? That is the bit of fire. That is the angel of the Lord. Lord of the Lord. Lord of the Lord. Angel of the Lord. Lord of the Lord. This is the thing. That I was speaking to Moses. It's a very push. This is actually the original form. Jesus Christ, that is the reason. After he left. The everything. He became the word. That was short. He is the fire. He don't have to be a shock. He is the fire. He don't have to be a shock. He became Melchizedek. And lived in the fire. And lived in the fire. From the mind of God. To Melchizedek. To the fire. Which was seen as Melchizedek. But you, from the mind of God. She was a woman. From the mind of God. She was a woman. So he didn't live. In the fire. That's why he was a spirit of Amnesia. That's why Jesus looked at Amnesia. Because he came from God. He became the fire. He became flesh. And after he said, "I came from God." He cannot say the same. Because you don't know how you came down. But Amnesia was a way. The way is spoken. Because it takes away Amnesia. And you begin to live. In your fire influence. In the flesh. You live in your flesh. By the influence. Of your fire. You bypassed. But Jesus lived in your fire. He saw him. He is Melchizedek. He is Melchizedek. He saw Abraham. Abraham saw him. And he rejoiced. And, and, and Melchizedek. He took fresh air. He came all the way from glory. And he took elements, sixteen elements. He said, "Huh." Gabriel. Talking to this. Talking to this. I talk into this. And he came to Abraham. He came to Abraham. He came to Egypt. The book of our goodness is. And he ended it. He was a man. He was a man. When God ended it. When God ended it. And he gave me. And he parted with Jesus. After he was full. He went into the sand. Where is your problem? This is Melchizedek. Where is your problem? Where is your problem? Where is your wife? And Abraham's a blonde. In the tent. In the tent. The Lord has been here. And we know that this is a tent. This is a tent. This flesh here is a tepaneko. If you are in the tent. If you are not shannon today. Then Elohim is talking to you. In chapter four, it says there. It was inside like an emerald. And that emerald there is amber green color. Yellowish green. So there's a combination of colors there. From that rainbow. To make it an emerald. Which are depicting something about this God. And there are four and twenty arrows. Emery has no time to go into that. But then there were seven lamps. And for the throne. Which are the seven spirits of God. Which are the seven spirits. That God was the founder of. As Elohim. Now, the prophet goes on to say. I don't want to go into this because. It says, okay, Father. Like someone was speaking the other day. He said, "God." What was it? When he was making oil. Millions and millions of days ago. Just like this space here. This space. Then he gathered up into Logos. Gathered up into. And then he came from Logos down into Christ. So he was still in the space. Then he gathered up into Logos. Into Christ. And we always say God is omnipresent. And God is omniscient. He is omnipotent. The prophet says. God is not omnipresent. God is not omnipresent. It's a lie. To say God is omnipresent. And shaking some hands. The good sinners. From the Lord. The prophet says. He cannot be omnipresent. But he is a being. God drives me out. God sits on the throne. How can he be omnipresent? If he is omnipresent. He is in this desk. If he is omnipresent. He is in this time. If he is omnipresent. He is into this. So God is not omnipresent. But God is omnipresent. He is omnipresent. He is omnipresent. So God is omnipresent. By omniscient. But Jesus. God is not omnipresent. He is omnipresent. He is omnipresent. Because the Lord has. Because the Lord has. He is omnipresent. He is omnipresent. He is omnipresent. That's omnipresent. Makes him omnipresent. He is like your camera. Something like to a camera. Since it's TV. He is not gonna go. 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 He is not gonna go.
God is omnipresent by big omniscient But I know Jesus Christ is tough But I know Jesus Christ is fair But I know Jesus Christ is good But I know Jesus Christ is everything by knowledge Do you hear what I'm saying? This omniscient makes God omnipresent I, eh, I'm positive That is why he says God is omnipresent Because God is omnipotent He is omnipresent Then he is omniscient In addition to that, God is not omnipresent I have not known that God Is a correct God But what I am saying defines that God God is omnipresent God is omniscient He is omnipotent But what makes him omnipresent? Is that he is omniscient That's the difference God is omnipresent by omniscient But I know I am omniscient But I know I am omnipotent Apparently impossible Because you always have many ways of making it possible Because you are omniscient One of them is, "Who is this omnipresent?" That's it I read it, I read it, that's it I tried to read Right Right, wait, then stop there Those who have tonight eternal life Was with him and in him In his thinking Before there was ever an angel Before there was ever a one The first thing that God created To become God Was actually himself Into Logos Which was not a creation but a changing of form With the prophet's curse and offer So the Logos was God and offered Which is the invisible becoming visible And became one Logos How is it became Logos? God Because the Logos were the son of God The Logos was the son of God The Bible says But Jesus Christ, Jesus Christ was the beginning and I am the creation of God So Jesus Christ, Jesus Christ was the beginning and the creator of God He was the first born of every creature That is the creature himself In the form of Logos Saint Jesus Christ and offer He became a creative creature In what way? Because the Bible says Nothing that ever was created was created without him Without who? Without the word Who? So Christ Becomes now the creator Every angel Came after Christ And when angels began to worship God And him became God By the sake of worship From a king Which was saying, "Holy, holy, holy, holy" Then he became God Now you were there in his thinking From the eyes of him Before there was an angel Before there was a star Before there was a king Anything else That's eternal That's why you have eternal life Because eternal life never began And eternal life will never end So that's eternal And if you have eternal life You always was Not your being But the shape and the form But the infinite God What is the shape and the form? Is your eternal being In heaven eternal Waiting for you To go into it When you die But the prophet says Our complete journey And you read, "Who is this omnipresent?" And if, if, if he isn't infinite If he isn't Amen He isn't God God has to be infinite We are finite He is infinite And he was omnipresent He was omnipresent When was he omnipresent? In the seven spirits He was omnipresent He was present time He was omnipresent Omniscient And omnipotent If he is If he isn't If he is, he's omniscient If he's omnipotent He's only living omnipresent If he isn't Then he can be God He knows all things He knows all precious Because of his omnip- Because of his omnipresent Omniscient makes him omnipresent And he is a being He is not like a weed He is a being Lives in a house But being omniscient Knows all things Makes him omnipresent Because he knows everything That's going on There can be a sleep that is eyes But what he knows He will not touch Who are the children? She go, she go I can't take a sleep No, Maria, I wonder Because I got to it Because no one wants it
Amen, thank you, Lord
I'm omniscient now God knows a sleep better than his eyes He even know this before the world began How many times a bed will bed his eyes? But when the sun The guy is a god Because he will go Catch a plane like a guy Catch a plane like a new one But he's a man of the battle Before he came back He knew how many steps he must went to go He knew how many days he must went to have He knew how many days he must went to die But when the sun Because he must went to bed A million times Fuckin' the papa He know this before there was a world How many times he would bed his eyes And how many times he had to do Because he have a foot I'm a car Before there was ever a world But it's infinite We can't comprehend it It's our mind But that's God God, infinite He did it, he did it, he did it Hallelujah So I got a photo So I got a course So I will But I should give a photo But I should give a photo But I should give a photo I don't like 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 But I don't like Because I don't know I don't know But anything can happen Anything can happen Anything can happen Anything can now happen Anything can now happen Receive your desire Anything can happen now Wherever you are You may be in Alibin You may be in South Africa You may be in Noto You may be in Zambia You may be in Highland Wherever you are But I don't like She did it, she did it, she did it She don't like Talking to the Pizza, she must have sat there Pizza, who don't go Pizza, who play Pizza, who say Pizza, who say Pizza, who can Who can Who can Pizza, who can Who can As the God of course Talking about Of the devil Talking about the house Of demonology House of hell Good way now House of hell, good way For the name of Jesus Christ He is sinners brother I anoint you For the business I anoint you For a business I anoint you For a good idea I anoint you For a good idea I anoint you For a good idea To get what you need What I believe in Let you guys come on, man Tell me something, man What I believe in Let you guys come on, man Tell me something, man What I believe in Let you guys come on, man Tell me something, man What I believe in Let you guys come on, man Tell us something, man What I don't know Play that game You know, I don't know Play that game Who can say, man? I see, man, I'm saying, man Play that game No, play that game I don't know Who can cook, man? Man, I don't play that game It's real, right? I don't know But I can assure you that God is the great cook Man, I don't cook, man Man, I don't cook, man Man, I don't cook, man Papillon But I'm not I'm not I'm not I'm not God, he is On papillon, he cook And the couple came to God And said, "Do you see what they are about to do For your children? Let me talk to her" They destroyed papillon All the same I have been cooking that All night I have seen Doing what they want to do To their children And I want to see We still have to say I'm very much That I'm very much Satan, I'm very much He's laughing tears But they're all laughing tears But in the early morning, I assume him now But I assume right now He's assuming it He's infinite He's omniscient He's omnipresent He's omnipotent Big omnipotent Big omnipotent Big omnipotent Big omnipotent And you are omnipotent And you are fated He's omnipotent, God You are omnipotent You are fated He's omnipotent, God And God is omnipotent And you are omnipotent God too He's omnipotent And when omnipotent is made Something has done to shake And omnipotent is made Something has done to shake He will have to shake Man, I don't know I don't know Man, I don't know I don't know Because God is there Two omnipotent have met I don't know I don't know I don't know I don't know My pillow, I know I don't know You know, I'm not I'm not You know, I'm not I'm not I'm not Because pillow, I'm not shaking My pillow, I'm not shaking My pillow, I'm not shaking My size, I'm not going I don't know, I'm not going Is that you know? My size, I'm not going I don't know I don't know I'm not shaking But I don't know Long The door is a pillow I don't know I don't know The door is a pillow Let's find Pedro the house The door is a pillow Let's have a song The door is a pillow We left to the Tell me, say, to let The door is a pillow Let me know, man The door is a pillow Let me know, man The door is a pillow Let me know, man The door is a pillow Who is size, it's a pillow Because my size, I don't know I'm not I'm not But I don't know my size 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 I don't know 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 Who's there? Who's there? Who's there? I don't know 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 I see, I see I see, I see I can't preach anymore I can't preach anymore I don't care But I'm not serving colors I don't care to talk But I'm not serving colors But those serving colors are already here Those colors are already here Hallelujah, green With lights In the rainbow I said, "Green" With lights In the rainbow Receive life I'm not a no-fa-pa-no What I mean is a piano I'm not a real pa-no I'm not a real user I'm not just a pa-no It's a green Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah And the mercy of the Lord Let him not be a love of God Let him not be a love of God But love of God is here right now But love of God is here A red color A red color The color of redemption To redeem you From your distractions To redeem you From your poverty To redeem you From the devil's power To update your life To update your life To upgrade it To update your system now Upgrading the system We are upgrading the system System upgrade We are raising your rank In the spirit Raising your position In the spirit Upgrading the system All things are possible All things are possible See, we can go forward Close your eyes Bring your inheritance Close your eyes I have the children waiting to pocket it now Before I go to pocket Close your eyes Take the seed of desire Before I go to pocket Hallelujah! 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 This is not psychology. This is not psychology. This is not psychology, not on people. This is not psychology. God is in finite. God is in finite. What can you do? What can you do? What can you do? What can you do? As in, I'm going to marry my wife. I'm going to marry my wife. Five hundred dollars. I don't want to. What is five hundred dollars? What is five hundred dollars? Why? Why does food fish? Why for your child? She go and some fish. She go marry someone. If I'm not married, I'm not married. I don't want to. So what is that? Before God, anything can happen. Anything can happen. She will have it. She will have it. Glory to God! Hallelujah! 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 Take the cost at the will. Hallelujah! Take the cost at the will. And anything happen now. God will thank you this afternoon, this morning. Hallelujah! You know, there is Jehovah. You know, there is Abraham. There is Isaac and there is Jacob. You know, there is Moses and there is Yahweh. There is Yahweh. You know, there is Yahweh. There is Yahweh. There is Jehovah. 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 You know, there is Jehovah. 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 Thank you, Father. My Lord, with this morning, we thank you. This morning, my Father, receive the glory. Receive the honor, for you are worthy to receive the glory of the Lord. They come before you, as seraphims, as kerbims, as angels around the throne. Then we scream, "Holy, holy, holy." And we don't come further, as long as we worship us. But we come to say, "There is Jehovah. There 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 is Jehovah." Thank you, this morning. We love you, this morning, as we give you the glory, for you are worthy. Be with your people, and they shall retain home. May your angel go with them, Father. Keep them happy and in your presence. They may know that they are never alone, no, never alone. But know they are with them all the time. They are not lonely. They are not lonely. They are not lonely. There is Jehovah. They are not lonely. They are not lonely. They are not lonely. There is Jehovah. They are not lonely. There is Jehovah. There is Jehovah. There is Jehovah. There is Jehovah. Thank you, Father. Bless your holy name, my Lord, in the name of Jesus. Let your name be glorified, in the name of Jesus. Bless your name, in the name of Jesus. Hallelujah! 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 Thank you, Jesus. Satan is our thief, my Lord. And we are proud. The devil is a liar. He tells us we are nothing, but he told us that we are something. He tells us we are nothing, but he said we are God. He says we are sinners. He says we are possible with us. And we truly take away. And the Bible says, "Who has believed our report? Who is the arm of the Lord?" And I believe in that report this morning, that we are born. That report this morning, that all things are possible to them that can believe. To them that can believe. That report, my Father. That God is a healer of all our sicknesses. We receive our report and believe in it, Father. And our work is revealed. Even my Father, this morning. Let your will be done. And we will do it out of our own mind. My Lord, my Father, Jehovah. Gosh, he's a man, he's a man. Satan, I'm a man. Anything, my Father, can happen now. The sick can be healed. The poor can be made rich, Lord. So we pray in Lord's prayers. Come, we're not, we can now pray now. And we pray for the answer. For anything can now happen. Thank you, my Jesus. Let's be, my Lord. Don't get a man. Don't do it, Jehovah. Have you done it? Thank you, Jesus. God can do everything. You can do everything. You are only shenke. You are only present. You are only content. You are everything, Father. And we thank you. And we exalt you. Oh, my Lord, Almighty. We give you the praise, my Lord, and honor. He's a man, he's a man. 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 Influenced, yeah, he's a man. He's a man, 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 he's a man. Thank you, he's a man, Papa. He's a man, he's a man. Message, he's a man. And I'm a man, he's a man. He's 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 a man, he's a man.[1071.35]